Yeah.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to welcome preacher Teddy Jones from Bless Springs Church of Christ as he leads us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you past a weekend where us as a community has remembered your son's death, burial, and resurrection. We pray that we would keep those things in mind as we serve this community. We are thankful and blessed to live in this great state and in this community of Warren County. We pray for all of its citizens. We especially pray for those that are vulnerable. We pray for those that have found themselves homeless in our community, that you would protect them. We pray for those that have found themselves in our jail system and that you would keep them safe and bring them to an understanding of better living. We pray that you would be with the immigrants that have come into this community that have worked in our nurseries and work in our factories. We pray that you would be with them and their families as they integrate into this community. We pray that you would be with those that are elderly, those that need the care of those around about us, and we pray that you would help us to look for those opportunities to serve those that are in need in such ways as we indeed serve you. We do ask for your mercy as we show mercy to others. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Give me a moment as we prepare for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we've got Adam Acock here to lead our pledge, and I want to give a brief biography of his career here. A native of Warren County, Adam Acock was raised by Ralph and Chris Wommack in Campan. He graduated from Warren County High School in eighty-nine after attending Vanderbilt University on a Navy ROTC scholarship for one year. He was accepted to the U.S. Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland. Adam graduated from the Naval Academy in nineteen ninety-four with an oceanography degree. Also in nineteen ninety-four, he married Carrie Ann Anderson, the daughter of Colonel and mistress Gary Anderson, United States Marine Corps. Adam and Carrie served the nation in the Navy for twenty-five years during which they had the privilege to command three warships, which included a tour in Major Command as the Battle Force Seventh Fleet Ballistic Missile Defense Commander and One Shore Command. Their sea tours included USS Rodney M. Davis, Japan, USS Mobile Bay, Japan, USS Steatham, California, USS Princeton, California, MCM Crew Reaper, Texas, USS Gladiator, Bahrain, USS Sentry, Texas, USS Mahan, Virginia, okay, and USS Shiloh, Japan. Sea duty included numerous deployments, Operation Iraqi Freedom II, The Global War on Terrorism, thank you, and ballistic defense patrols in the Mediterranean and Western Pacific. Their shore tours included the Pentagon in Washington, D.C., the Navy's Bureau of Personnel in Millington, Tennessee, and the U.S. Naval War College in Newport, Rhode Island. Somewhere along the way, Adam and Carrie found the time to have three terrific children, Ashley, twenty-eight, Gray, twenty, and Ella, nine. Adam continues to serve the nation as a defense contractor for the Missile Defense Agency. He's also working with the great folks from the USDA, Tennessee Department of Agriculture and Forestry Service to restore a bit of land in Morrison along Big Hickory Creek to native pollinators, grasses, and trees. Carrie has her hands full building their forever home in Morrison, taking Ella to soccer, softball, and Girl Scouts, and keeping her four chickens, Licorice Pepper Sundrop, and I like that name, and Honey, safe and happy. Adam, we want to thank you for your service, and we ask that you lead us in our pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank everybody here and the members, past, present, and future, for your service to our county and the people in McMinnville. And I have to thank my wife, Carrie. She was born into the Marine Corps, so I did twenty-five years, but she did forty-five. And also Ella, who was born into it, and she's moved probably around more places than most people she goes to school with, and she's done great. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I call the meeting to order, and I ask Lisa to call the roll, please.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden. Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Deborah Evans. Steve Lynn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton. Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Brad Hillis. Ron Lee.
Present.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Kristy Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Lane Wilcher.
Here.
Twenty present.
All right, twenty present. At this moment, I would allow or entertain a motion to adopt a docket.
Send motion to adopt the docket.
Motion from Commissioner Brown, second from Commissioner Owens, and one will speak to that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner England.
Mr. Chairman, due to the fact of our special presentation, we've got some people here that's driven a long distance. I asked last month, I told you that we would have our Snap-on rep come, Jim Walpert, and he lives on the other side of Chattanooga in this long drive for him. And I'd request that him be moved right after reading of the minutes before the public comment, please, sir, and I put that forward motion.
All right, is that just him or all special presentations?
Well, I was going to do another one. Can I do them together?
Yes, those two.
Okay, let's go ahead and move the nonprofit up there as well and do that right after him, okay?
All right, we have a motion.
Form a motion.
Motion from Commissioner England, second from Commissioner Savage to move the special presentations to directly.
That's right after the reading of the minutes.
Right after the reading of the minutes. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we will move that to directly after reading of the minutes. Now, we're back on our original motion to adopt a docket. Yes, Commissioner Sparkman. Oh, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. At this time, I would entertain the reading of the minutes.
Chairman, I make the motion that we spend this minute, that we have seven minutes to read.
All right, we have a motion to dispense with the reading and approve them as written. Have a second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is public comment, and I do want to say when we start this, as we mentioned. I'm sorry, yes, we have our special presentation, and we will start with Snap-on. Mr. Jim Walpert.
Thank you. Try that again, that's better. Thank you. My name is Jim Walpert. I'm the Educational and Industrial Account Manager for Snap-on Industrial, Division of Snap-on Tools. I've been working here in Warren County for almost twenty-three years. I just wanted to quickly talk about a program that's been instituted here in Warren County. It's a Snap-on NC-Three certification. NC-Three is a national coalition of certification centers. They're a nonprofit that certifies students with specific skills based on kits that schools and government agencies purchase. Warren County has purchased two of these kits now. The first one is a precision measuring instrument kit, and with that, it teaches students how to use specific measuring instruments. It starts with tape measures and rules, goes through micrometers, dial calipers, depth gauges, six different certifications within that one particular kit. And then recently, they've also purchased a multi-meter certification kit, and that teaches students how to read and use a multi-meter. And what these kits do is it teaches specific skills, so once they get certified, they get certificates from NC-Three, which is nationally recognized, and it helps with the students getting employment once they finish the program. What they've done here in Warren County is they've purchased these kits to be used at the jail. So, if the incarcerated qualify, they go through these programs, these certifications, and once they're done, they get these certificates. So, when they get out of jail, they can hopefully find employment using these certificates, and it should reduce recidivism within the jails. They, with precision measuring, they've had that certification now for about one year. They've got an instructor that came from the TCAT that's instructing it, and I think so far, they've had five former inmates that have gotten employment. And another employer, Morrison Industries or Morrison Fab, has agreed to hire any of the former inmates that have this certification. But the certification is not only, I mean, you've got a number of machine shops and fabricators here in the county and surrounding counties. It's great, great for those employers, but can also be used in industrial maintenance, just a whole number of industries. The multi-meter certification, that will allow former inmates to seek jobs with electricians, industrial maintenance, HVAC companies, et cetera. And these same certifications are taught here at TCAT McMinnville and also in Warren County High School. But if these former inmates decide to continue their education, go to a TCAT, they can go to any TCAT in the state. I think there's twenty-seven or twenty-eight of them. Every one of these TCATs in the state is an NC-Three certified school. So, almost all of them are teaching the same thing that they're taking here in the jail. So, I just want to thank the county commission for approving those purchases, and I look forward to working with y'all on a continual basis.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll go to public comment. Nonprofits, okay. You tricked me when you said that's it. All right, we've got nonprofits up next. Executive Haley.
Paysetters, I think Lynette Cock came in. She wanted to go first because of another commitment.
Okay.
And so, if Lynn's here, if you'll come on up.
And we want to mention, everybody gets four minutes, and we'll field some questions. If there's any questions, we'll field a couple of questions, but that is our normal rule, is four minutes per presentation. And don't take it hard, but Commissioner Bell is my timekeeper.
I won't get four minutes. My name is Lynette Cock, and I have been with Paysetters for twenty-nine years, and I'm a support manager. And we were requesting the funds for transportation and helps with the. It helps with the getting our guys out into the community and to their job sites and things like that. And it's, we just really appreciate everything you guys have done for us over the years.
All right, anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Next will be Books from Birth, Kristy Allison.
Thank you.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate you giving me your time and attention tonight. This is my first time. Those of you that know Autumn Turner had done this job for years, and when she left, she had asked me if I would take over and do the volunteer work for Books from Birth, because I do believe that reading for children is the most important thing that we need to teach children, because without being able to read, you can't do any other subjects. So, just wanted to kind of let you know what the money was used for, and Mr. Haley, if you would help, this is just a line-out thing of what we used it for, and then I'll go over that with you. I don't want to take up much of your time. But with this money that we received, the ten thousand dollars, we use that to buy our books for our children here in Warren County. So, as he passes this sheet out, you will see roughly that it costs us about fifteen hundred dollars a month just to be able to buy the books each month for the children. A lot of people think that Dolly pays for all of that. She pays for the postage, and then counties themselves have to pay for the amount of money. So, it's a great cost monthly, and we do pay that monthly. So, you can see July was not as much, August, maybe not as much, but then when you get into October, November, December, our costs go up. So, it averages about fourteen to fifteen hundred per month during the full year. I just gave you a six-month window there, because it's kind of when I sort of started, took over. And then, so that total came to eight thousand, seven hundred, eighty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. So, then the rest of the money, we took, I did some events and have lots of events planned for this next year that Books from Birth is going to be doing with semi-retiring and trying to figure out how to do my job at the central office and kids of the community. And now this, it's taken me a while to get Books from Birth really under and doing a planning for what I really want to do. But some of the things I was able to do is I was able to give some new books to our Warren County Schools, twenty-one, twenty-two, new teachers. Any of you know or have had someone in your family be a new teacher, they walk into a classroom with not very many things. I remember walking into Northside Elementary, and I had a bookshelf, and that was it. So, Mr. Stout, I came to see you and got lots of furniture for me, thank you. That was about thirty-six years ago. But anyway, we were able to give some of those teachers of the younger grades, I think I gave them about three or four books apiece. Breakfast Rotary, I spoke, and I actually shared my Dolly book with everyone and had them to remember what it was like and who that special person was that read to them in their life. And shared some books with Noon Rotary as well, signed up some people at all three of those. Caring Hearts United, The Wonderland of Trees. I ordered a bunch of Christmas books, and I gave about, I think I ordered about six or seven hundred books, and I gave all of them away that day. And to see the smiles on those kids' faces, and it was just, I just put them in a big wagon, and they were just digging through until some of them, the parents would say, all right, pick out two books and let's go. You know, they were really excited about the books and getting those books into the hands. I was able to sign up about five children that day. And like I said, Read Across America, I was able to give out some books then. So, I overspent, so we had to pull money from other ways. But I just wanted to let you know that's how the money was spent, and we were able to buy high-quality books for a cheap price.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you.
Any questions?
What age groups did you say they would go to?
When we do the Books from Birth, it says that they are mailed out monthly. Those go from zero to five. Once they turn five, then they no longer get them in their homes. So, that's why we want to do these community events and get it into the, get older books into the hands of other children. So, I did anywhere from fifth grade down on the books that I've given out, given out some chapter books, things like that. So, as we do the reach out, we, our main is zero to five, but we want to share with other children too, as money is available.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Kristy.
I also share all my Dolly books with them too, so. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman is Bruce Attneff from, no, it's Kristy, Stubblefield from Families and Christ.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight. We have requested six thousand dollars from the county this year. And as you all know, we are the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Program that covers Warren County, and that includes our shelter and our twenty-four-hour emergency services that we provide as well. Last year, in our shelter, we provided shelter for eighty-eight victims of domestic violence or sexual assault. We provided two thousand, one hundred and forty-five bed nights in our shelter. Our shelter was at capacity for much of the year, and so we ended up providing a hundred and seventy-two bed nights in motel housing at other places in the community. In our shelter, we provided food for six thousand, four hundred and thirty-five meals, and we were able to rehouse seventeen families. We have funding through THCA to rehouse our families. Unfortunately, we were only able to rehouse seventeen due to the shortage of housing that's available. Right now, we have a shelter. Right now, we have a shelter full of individuals and families who are ready to be rehoused. The housing is just not readily available at this time. That requires them to stay in shelter longer. So the cost of food, the cost of utilities, things like that are increasing with the demand for them to stay in shelter longer. Another part of our program that is rapidly growing is our crisis intervention. Last year, we answered 2,500 crisis calls through our 24-hour crisis line. 113 of those calls were at the request of an officer directly from 911. 125 of those calls were directly from an officer requesting assistance from Families in Crisis. And we assisted with 319 orders of protections after hours through the assistance of our advocates in our crisis line. Families in Crisis provided 728 free counseling sessions to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault and we responded 338 times to provide crisis intervention, which could be crisis counseling, it could be safety planning, assisting with an order of protection, things like that as well. Some of the funding that we requested this year that we have not requested before in the past was $500 to assist with our playground. As you can imagine, the extended stay of children in shelter during the COVID pandemic was, did a little bit of wear and tear on our playground. So we are needing a little bit of assistance upgrading that and make sure that it's safe and that our children have a place to play outside when they're restricted to the areas of just the shelter. So that's all I have unless you all have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Kristi.
And we'll have Bruce Attniff from Heritage Alliance.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of you for the work you do, for the work of the other nonprofits that do the job that they do. Our Heritage Alliance, as some of you may know, is our historic umbrella for McMenville, Warren County that preserves the local history. We operate a museum at 113 East Main Street and through your donations, the lights and utilities are kept going so that we can preserve thousands of artifacts that are given to us or some we purchase because we see the need of investing in that to tell Warren County's story. History's important and we know Warren County has a vested interest in history as we now have three historic museums on Main Street here in McMenville. People are interested in the past and that's what our museum group does. We go through various things to enlighten our communities such as the displays we do at our museum, which currently we're hosting a thing called our Music Pathways that educates on all the, the celebrities that have gone famous from Warren County and those that we thought were famous such as the, the stars that perform on the stage at Warren County Fair each year. And this tells that story. We do the displays at the fair each year as well. And from time to time, we have people to make good donations to us such as this one. This is a proclamation that was given by Mayor at the time, Royce Davenport, and handed to, to Dottie West on September 8th of 1986 to proclaim that day as Dottie West Day. Artifacts like these and simple slips of paper. Doesn't look like much, does it? Looks like I might have dug it out of a dumpster somewhere. But this goes back to 1866, which is a subpoena that a sheriff at that time handed to people to bring them to court for things they should not have been doing. And it's things like this that is the reason that when we request funding for our help with insurances or the utilities, reimbursement and things of this nature, it helps us tell Warren County's story. History is important and so books like the ones Ms. Kristi is handing out to the kids sometimes will include history stories. It lets us know where we were and where we're headed as far as the future. We can look back at the past and see the grand stories from McMenville, Warren County, Valhalla, whoever it is, and the not-so-grand stories. But it helps us build a better tomorrow by understanding the foundation that this county commission is built on, that citizens stand on. And that, and that's who we are and we thank you so much for the gracious and generous support that you've given through the years.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. Next is Nancy Mayfield from the Home Delivery Meals Program.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I understand that we are to let you know what we did with the money that you gave us last year. Well, we at Meals on Wheels sent out over 50,000 meals last year to 215 clients. We had, in the past, tried to keep our client load to 200, but we've not been able to do that recently. So we have picked up a few more than what we normally do. Out of that 215, we have 43 UCDD clients, which we subcontract with them, the Warren County clients that they are serving under Title III. So we're doing part of their job in that contract. It cost us around $5 per meal. In the past, it's been a little bit less, but we're suffering from the high prices of foods lately. We serve 260 meals per year, per person, and some of those get weekend meals, so that would be more than that. And it costs us around $1,200 to $1,300 a year to feed those people. We focus on elderly that are over 60. We do have a few disabled, mentally challenged clients who are a couple that are younger than 60, but our focus is over 60 and most of those people are 80s, 90s, are average ages like 84 right now. We deal with the physically and mentally, the mental health issues of those people. A lot of our people have dementia, some of them are too feeble to cook, some are malnourished and there's a couple of reasons that they're malnourished. When you live alone, you don't, you can't cook every food on the spectrum to keep a well-balanced diet. So we find a lot of our people are malnourished because they're eating one or two things. Whereas when we bring in a plate, we've got a variety of foods that meet the criteria for the Older Americans Act, Title III, and our menus are approved by that. We have 13 delivery routes all over this county. Some of them are in such remote areas that we send out frozen to them on days that we can't get there. Most of our communities are served in Warren County with some of the clients that we serve. Our routes will deviate from who is in need. Sometimes the center town area has a, just a full load and then it, it will flip back to another part of the community, Rock Island or someplace. So it's just where the need is, is where the clients are. All those meals are delivered by volunteers, people who come in and use their gas, which is pretty generous right now, their gas and their time to get those meals out there. Otherwise, we could not operate. And there's over 100 people a week in and out delivering some of those meals. And I'm looking at some of those faces that are in and out of our place of business. So we really do appreciate you doing that. Other than the volunteers getting the meal to them, it's a wellness check and those wellness checks serve a lot of different benefits, like they, they do simple things like get their mail or pick up their medicine for them. Sometimes it's more serious. They have to make emergency calls and we've done quite a few of those lately for people who need an ambulance or people who are past needing an ambulance and we have to deal with the families. So there's a, a lot, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's, that's, that's time. Does anybody have any questions?
You get the gist of it anyway.
You did, you did good. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Bowden.
We do. We serve hot meals Monday through Friday. Yes, but it's, it's a large meal. It's something that most of our clients say that they can use it like for their lunch and their dinner. And then there's extras. We give, you know, fruits and different things that are extra that they can have as snacks. So it's a large meal. It's not like what, you know, a small portion that we would serve. But they also get those weekend meals. Some of the people that we serve that have no one else, we send them frozen for the weekends so that they will not have to do without. We get calls about people that are down to 90 pounds and things like that. Well, we can't let them go the weekends as well without something to eat and they're just not able to do it themselves. We're just hoping to keep them in their homes as long as we can. How much are you requesting this year?
I'm asking for 20, which is, we need some stable sources of revenue. We're out, we're competing now with lots of different nonprofits. We are dealing with high prices. For the last six years, our budget, our revenue coming in has been about $15,000 less than what we're, that we're spending. So we're losing, you know, that $15,000 is like a month's worth of work and we're going backwards as far as spending goes. And so we really need to get caught up and each year I've asked like a thousand or 2,000 more, but I'm not going to live long enough to get you all where you need to be. So I'm going to ask for more now.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yes. Just appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Sheila, your time to shine for home.
Thank you for having me. My name is Sheila Fan. I'm co-director of Home, which is homeless of McMenville effort. We serve our unsheltered population here and we do that through the means of motel rooms, tents, blankets, food. We offer shower opportunities weekly through the goodness of First United Methodist Church, who allows us to use their facility. There we provide clean clothing, toiletries, food, care packages. We offer resources for jobs. We work with them one-on-one. We find leaders who, and other volunteers who might be a good fit for that person to help them find a job and to get on their feet. Or maybe it's a, maybe it might be a treatment program that they need. So we also provide bus tickets if they're not from here. If they want the opportunity to go back home, we, we provide those. In the last year, we began providing what we call a work-a-day-pay-a-day program because what is a motel room? If, if it's freezing, yes, a motel room's going to keep you from, from dying, but what's that going to do in two days? So what we said was let's do more. Okay, we'll do this, you work a day, we'll pay a day until you are, have enough funds to pay on your own. And we have saw great success. Have we saw failure? Yes, we have, but we have saw much more success than we have saw failure with that program. And we're, we're very, very tickled with that. We, let me see where I'm at. We provide ministry teams. They have some spiritual support. They go out every Sunday evening and we're, we're very, we're very thankful for those folks. So that's how we serve our friends. We serve our county as being the first call for 911. We serve St. Thomas Ascension. When they have someone who does not have anywhere to go, we take them. We pay special care for our veterans and work with them with the resources here that might be available. We also work with cheer mental health, other area churches and organizations. We are the go-to for those who are homeless. We turned in this application as a small portion of our cost for the winter months. As you know, we are building Prosperity Point and it's coming along, but it won't be enough. We served 310 adults last year and 45 children. So we'll have eight homes and not everybody will be eligible to go into those homes. So to say we need this funding, we spent thousands of dollars last winter and we're really looking for something to maybe have a warming shelter, do something, another alternative for that. So, and we do all this through volunteers. We have, no one's paid. And so all of our money is really to go straight to our people. The leadership, everybody that's in leadership of Home mostly works a full-time job and then they give to themselves at nights and weekends and filling out paperwork and, you know, the list goes on, but do I have any time left?
15 seconds.
15 seconds? Okay, just real quick. The faces, they're different. And this morning at 3:00 AM, the police called us and there was an 18-year-old girl. She had been foster home, foster home, foster home until, and then she was seeking shelter from a store, made a convenience store. And Chase was an autistic young man who was found in the woods, he was being abused by his caretaker. And, you know, we worked with him. He's thriving in a group home. Our volunteers did. Charlotte's 74 years old and we currently have her in a motel room right now because her husband left her three months ago and she was evicted. Both of their, she couldn't make it on her own. So I just want you all to know, it's the faces. I said I want to often write book and, to say, because all the faces are different and all the stories are different.
Thank you, Commissioner Hesse.
Thank you so much for what you do. And my question is simply this, the numbers that you are seeing today compared to the numbers that you experienced, say, four years ago, what's your take on that? And the other thing that I'm aware of that's happening within our community is we're having some outside investors come in buying rental properties that are affordable at this time, kicking those tenants out and they're going to increase the rate of the rent. What we're seeing across our nation and other communities close to us is going to filter here in McMenville and Warren County. And somehow, some way, we're going to have to try to get ahead of that curve. I just wanted your take on that to give us some insight. Thank you.
Well, we have only been in operation since December of 2019. We are seeing an increase and we do believe that it is, one, because they know we're here, more and more people finding out we're here, but second is lack of affordable housing. There's an, I think it's an urban legend where they said that homelessness was eradicated in one city by one person taking one person. And that's kind of one of our precepts that we try our best to work with, but housing is a big issue.
Commissioner England.
Sheila, where is a place that you guys, where we could drop off things like sleeping bags, tents, blankets, that kind of thing?
First United Methodist Church. Every Saturday morning from 10 to 11:30, that's our time for showers and donations. People come for showers, food and different things like that. And they leave there looking like new people. You never know, you know.
You can also leave them there at the church office or you want to bring them up here, I'll take them to church and put them in the room. So I got a key to it.
Thank you.
Jennifer Meredith was supposed to be here tonight for, for Main Street and she was unable to attend, so she said she'd be reaching out to some of the commissioners and giving some information out or she, you could give her a phone call and she could answer some things for you as well. So the next one is the Warren County Rescue Squad with Chad Ellis.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chad Ellis. I'm the, I'm the chief of the Warren County Rescue Squad. Little background of our organization, we've been serving the citizens of Warren County for 67 years. We provide emergency service for rope rescue, swift water rescue, searching for lost persons and recovery of drowning victims. We also assist the local law enforcement agencies when required. We also assist with local utility companies and road departments in times of severe and inclement weather. We also provide mutual aid to other rescue squads across the state of Tennessee if required. We're made up of a total of 36 members, 19 active, or 18 active and 18 inactive. up of a total of 36 members, 19 active, or 18 active and 18 inactive. We have nine members that are trained in high angle and low angle rescue, rope rescue. And we have nine members that are trained also in basic and advanced swiftwater rescue. Uh, we have also 15 members that are members of area volunteer fire departments and career fire departments. Um, last year we responded to about 75 calls here in the Warren County and surrounding areas. 65% of those are, as everyone knows, the kayak, uh, fad has exploded in the last few years. And 65% of those were kayak calls getting people off river. We went twice this weekend, matter of fact, to rescue a couple. Um, what we basically use the money for that we are appropriated is training for these individuals as certification goes out every two years. Equipment gets used and tethered we have to replace. Um, rope and harnesses have to be replaced five to seven years. That's their lifespan. Um, and we are made up of 100% volunteers. So we have no sort, no other source of income other than Warren County and the city of McMemville. Uh, we do have fundraising country ham breakfast. I notice a lot of people support, and we appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions?
Commissioner Hilton.
Y'all also do the, the Christmas toy thing too, don't you?
Not even longer.
Okay. And then, unlike the fire departments, y'all don't have membership dues that are collected. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. All the volunteer fire departments actually have some funding that, there, which is not enough. But y'all, y'all don't have any at all.
No, we do not.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Walker from Magnus Library.
Hello, everyone. I'm glad to be able to be here tonight and speak to you about the library. Uh, just a few things. I really, I know that we are a nonprofit and we're kind of a unique entity. And, sorry, my sugar fluctuates this time of the evening a little bit, um, in the state because it kind of puts us against everybody that I really don't want to be asking money against because, but it puts me in the position that I have to ask for money. So, because everyone here does a lot of the same things that we do, and a lot of them do so much more that is so much more necessary within the county. But what we do do is we've been serving Warren County for 109 years on that corner. Our building, the new building is actually, I'm going to put it on Facebook next week. The new building will be 90 years old. The historic building downtown will be 90 years old, May 1st. And in that time, we have helped educate Warren County. Ms. Cunningham during that time helped send packages overseas during the wars. She was one of the ones that was the head of all that. Half of the people in Warren County's went through those doors at one time or another. But in the, since July of last year, with the money that you've gave us, we did, um, 266 interlibrary loans, which is books we actually loan out to other counties within the state. And they loan books back to us. And we've had over 150 brought back to us. Uh, the circulation that we've done since July 1st was 46,943. That's a lot of books going out. We've had 44 programs since July. There was 411 children, or 411 for the children, 109 adults that came with them. Most of those are for their children's storytime. That's every Wednesday at 10:00 AM. It's to help children, preschool children learn to use numbers, um, and their colors and letters. Uh, it's at Wednesday at 10:00 AM. We're also now doing a metronics on Monday nights at 5:00 PM. Since July, we've had over 24,612 people come visiting the library. A couple of which, one of the weird things about libraries that a lot of people don't know is when people move into areas like this, one of the first places they go before they go to the chamber or anywhere else is their libraries. Because they know that they can receive a lot of services through us. They can't get other places, like eBooks, the children's storytimes and things like that. It's also a good way to meet other people within the community. Um, our computer users was 3,438. Our wireless sessions, 3,578. We've done 34 community service people. A lot of those are the college kids doing their community service. Our one-on-one tech help, we've done almost 500 individual. That's when people walk up to us individually, ask us to help them do things online. That's not including us helping with social security, income tax, resumes, job help, job searches. It's, we do a lot of job-related things with patrons. Um, we have 18,975 patrons actually signed up as library members. You do not have to be a library member to actually come in and use our computers. They are freely open to anyone in the public. And we put no restrictions on them other than the FICA restrictions that we have to put on them. Um, our summer reading program every year is a big success. We do between 50 and 150 kids. It varies from year to years, especially with COVID last couple of years. Um, we actually do a special program with two book vendors where we can buy children's books at a reduced price that are the showbooks that they take and show. And one of the reasons we do that is because when I can buy them like that and they're brand-new books, they're expensive books. A lot of them are 35 to $50 a piece. I can buy them for $10 and $11 a piece. Brand-new this year, current.
All right, that's time. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
In your circulation number that you quoted, does that include mobile apps of the, the memberships that we have to, to read the books?
Yes.
Online, online? Do they count, does that count your online readers?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious about that.
Yes, it does.
Oh, and the second question is, um, are you asking for more money this year or the same amount?
8,000.
The same amount?
Eight, an extra 8,000.
An extra 8,000.
The state, the state is trying to move libraries to, into the positions that they kind of want them to be, which is county-owned, city-owned, or at least represented the same as far as pay goes for the staff and things. So they have us ask.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all that was supposed to be here. Was there anybody else that was nonprofit that was asked to come for tonight? I think that was it then.
All right. With that being said, we will move to public comment. And at this time, before we start public comment, I would like to, uh, reiterate the rules that we have established here for the public comment. I know we've got a number that are here, and some may be speaking on the same subject. Uh, you get two minutes to speak. And then, uh, the parliament attorney will call time, and we will field a couple of questions. So please, uh, please mind that and be mindful of that. And, uh, we look forward to hearing from you. At this time, we have the first one, I believe, is Stacy Lee.
Hey, everybody. I'm Stacy Lee. I'm with the Patriot Group. And we're the ones that do the Constitution class. And we're actually have 10 sponsored slots, but we don't have any coverage on that for the media. So we haven't been able to fill those. Um, and we have a big event coming up on May 7th with a guest speaker. I did send an email to all of the commissioners on the 14th regarding the election integrity model. I heard back from three commissioners. So I don't know if the other people heard it, I mean, read it or watched the video. But I didn't hear back. And I did ask to respond, so I know that you received the email. Um, so what I want to say is, what's a paper ballot? Well, if you watched the video, you would know. But I'm going to assume some people didn't and the public didn't see it. So this is very similar to a paper ballot. Paper ballots are actually made by currency companies. Also, a paper ballot kind of looks like this too. This is a cleared check. A digital image of a cleared check, uh, front Now, what I sent to you, um, was directly from the MicroVote website. We use MicroVote machines here in Warren County. If you go to their website and go to the products page, and then go to the election security tab, you'll see some interesting information about the machine that we use here in Warren County. On the MicroVote website, it says they do a pre-election physical and cybersecurity sweep on the machines, just like the ones we use here. Physical and cybersecurity. The website says that it's to ensure the voting system has not been altered from its original version. Excuse me?
That's, that's two minutes.
Wow.
We have any questions from Ms. Lee? Next is Ms. Nikki Jewell.
Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. I would like to thank you again for serving Warren County. We do appreciate you. Uh, to continue with the election integrity, uh, who does the, does anybody know who does the security checks? When I say security checks, I mean the physical and the cyber sweeps, security sweeps. From what I understand, these are done by certified technicians. And all of these are done by the same producer of the machines. So folks, this is a monopoly. Um, it's the same thing as having the fox look over the hen house. None of us know, as far as I know, how to perform a physical or cyber security sweep. So most definitely looks like there was some type of vulnerability. Do any of you commissioners know when the first or the second sweep and exams occur? Are you well-versed in software, systems, and applications? How about data files? It looks like we have a problem here, a major problem. And this must be fixed. Uh, our freedom is on the line here. The future of your children and your grandchildren are at stake. And I will remind you once again that we are a republic, that we elect you guys to serve us as a free people. And with all due respect, I realize that many of you are working very hard, um, for our county and doing your best job. And I, we do appreciate that. Nevertheless, we're just here to inform you, to educate you, and provide you with solutions, uh, concerning this major issue of election integrity. And once again, I just want you guys to, um, we just want to encourage you guys to stand behind us on this critical issue. So hopefully you've had a chance to look at this information that we have provided you. And if not, we will get it to you as soon as possible. There's also been new information that came out. Maria Zacks, please check her information out. She has tons of it concerning election integrity.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. Next is Russell Cortez.
It's Cortez or Cortese. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
I just want to quote a couple scriptures real quick. The Bible says that, uh, Jesus said, "On the way, the truth and the life; no one comes the Father except through Him." And the truth will set you free. To continue with what, what Nikki was saying, when I vote, the only thing that I get in return is a little stinking "I voted" sticker. You all got it. We get it. Now, I took my daughter to the dentist the other day. The dentist showed evidence by way of an X-ray. The X-ray showed that she had two cavities. When I vote, I have no evidence of how I voted, whether Republican, Democrat, or for that matter, Mickey Mouse. Why can't I have evidence of how I voted like a receipt? I have gone to our election office to show how I voted in previous elections. Here's what they gave me. On this piece of paper, it just shows the party I'm registered for and the date I voted. But it does not show who I voted for in each election. Uh, for instance, in the November 2020 election, I'm unable to confirm which candidate I voted for if I left my party, or if I left my party, and if I voted independent or whatever, as many candidates are now registering for independents. I have no record of this. I'd like to have a record. How is it possible to get a receipt for a cup of coffee and visual evidence of my daughter's cavities, but I can't get confirmation record of how I voted? Voting with a receipt of who and when I voted can help prevent voter fraud. And I believe there has been voter fraud. And we just want one person, one vote. Okay? I appreciate what you're all doing. And please listen to what I'm saying. And I thank you for what you're doing. Please help us with this. And thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Cortez.
Sorry about that. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time. Um, our republic is at a crossroads. Will you be, will you be remembered as a hero in Warren County? I stand before you now on behalf of our freedom for our children and all of our future generations. When I went to the election office recently, they could not give me any information about my vote, if it was hacked or not hacked. Yet before, during, and after the election of 2020, there was much news about concerning the solar wind cyber attacks. For example, on, posted on CISA.gov/news is the article posted on December 13th, 2020, and revised on February 24th, 2021, CSI issues emergency directive to migrate the compromise of solar winds or on network management products. Anyone can find this on Google. Several of these articles point out that solar winds was the largest cyber attack ever in American history. It affected federal agencies, courts, parts of the private sector, state and local government. Hackers placed malicious code into trusted third-party software, infecting connected systems. To put a stop to the breach, some highly sensitive documents are only being received in paper form or on secure devices as thumb device, thumbnail devices. There is much to be, there is much that needs to be accounted for, for the elections here in Warren County. So we, the people, we have a true republic form of government with our election accountable to the people. I represent one, but, and that, and because I am one, that represents about 1,000 people.
All right, that's time.
Every person here is 1,000 people. Let's, let our voices be heard. Because that way, our voices will be heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Jim Weller.
Good evening. My name is Jim Weller, and I'm not going to talk about paper ballots. I live at 7857 Francis Ferry Road in Rock Island. And in February, I got a letter from our election commission. And I talked to Ms. Devonford about it last month, and she called me the next day, bless her heart. But in that letter, there was a new voter registration card. And this letter told me that I had requested it, but I didn't. And it was dated 2/15/22. My letter came, I don't know, within four or five days. And I asked Ms. Devonford about it last month, and she graciously called me the next day and told me that a petition that I had signed was, uh, they needed to verify my signature. This is all well and good, but those letters didn't go out till March. This is all well and good, but those letters didn't go out until March. The last of March, in fact. So...and the new one...my old one is dated 10/19. I can't see it because I don't have my glasses on. But anyway, when she called me the next morning, I was sitting on the bedside holding a lady's hand that was dying of lung cancer. And so, I just...I kind of let it go over my head. I thanked her for the telephone call, and her...but her answers were not...I won't say she lied to me. I think she was mistaken. And I'd like for somebody to check this out and find out how many more people are walking around with two voter registration cards. Because I know mistakes can be made. And we have three precincts. I was the first one to vote in our special...or our early voting the other day. I was the first one in Warren County. But I could have gone to...where are they? One's in Morrison and one's in Centertown. And before anyone would have caught it, I could have voted twice. I should have, yeah, because I'm trying to represent some candidates, and I should have, but I didn't do that. Anyway, I just want to...I'd like somebody, and Ms. Davenport's not here tonight, and she did what she said she would do. She called me the next day. But I had other things on my mind, so I didn't get to question her. I just would like to get some answers, and maybe there are several more people walking around, two of these, at least two. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Next is Trinidad Ramirez.
Thank you very much today, and thank you to the Commissioners. I just want to ask a couple questions. Does anybody know what DEFCON level we're at right now? That's what the continuity of government does. It'll lay down the information so that a person like me or this family right here can come and find out if there's a nuclear event. We have backup and good communication with each other, and we don't have that. Because you're in dereliction to your oath and your bond, as of last year, I gave you Title 18 U.S. Code 2382 and Code Subsection 4, and I received no response from the county. So, I am asking...actually, I'm not asking, and it's not a request, but we want an audit of Warren County voting procedures, equipment and all statutes within the next 48 hours. And I'll share with you why I say 48 hours. I'm a traumatic brain injury veteran. I fought for our Constitution, and I will always fight for our Constitution, but you all took an oath, a security bond with that oath. We're going to go after those bonds. It's going to close down and leave all these positions vacant with no funding because of the harm you caused, just an endangerment for our children here in Warren County. That's what I'm here to tell you. If you want to take a look at the paperwork that I have, all you have to do is ask me. But there is no dialogue for the chain of command that goes up from the federal to the state to the county and back up from the county. There's no dialogue with me. So, I'm asking, are you taking advantage of me because I'm disabled? I'm a traumatic brain injury victor. I've got to ask you, are you taking advantage of the information that I gave your council last year? Last year? And still silent? That's what I'm saying. When we protect the Constitution, you have to protect it with your life, but it's not being done here. I don't know what to tell you, but I'm going to keep submitting the paperwork to show you that when this time comes forward to fruition, all of you are going to be arrested. You're going to be charged with criminal crimes under Title 18.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. My subject is the future of the current National Guard Armory. We find ourselves in a unique moment where both opportunities will have the potential to coverage, and it is important that we seize the moment. It is my understanding that the Warren County Executive is working with the state of Tennessee to use the land on which the National Guard Armory sits on for the location of a new regional health department. I fully support this effort, and I write to you not to stand in the way of this great progress, but instead to submit a proposal to reach even more people with this endeavor and thus do more good for us all. I propose that the regional health department dedicate spaces to veterans organizations and services in addition to incorporating architectural elements of the existing building in the design of the new regional health department itself. Being the second oldest armory in Tennessee, our armory is historically significant. It is important to recognize this hollow ground and respectful meaning for way, both in the physical form of the new health department and in the services it provides. Please review this proposal. I hope everybody got one there. I laid it on the table there. I would appreciate setting up a time to speak with you about the ideas it conveys and discuss their importance and feasibility. Thank you for the consideration. Any questions?
All right. At this time, I would like to go ahead and do the special recognition, and following that, we will have a five-minute recess.
It's always a pleasure when we can recognize the endeavors of individuals who stand out and their performance of doing government work, and particularly in the area of archiving and preserving county records. And so, we want to thank Jean Hobbs earlier for the work that she's done, but someone has stepped into that position, Ann Brown, who's received training now and has done an exceptional job with grants in order to get the equipment to begin the scanning of documents and the storage of those so that greater numbers of people can look through index and find what they need to do about Warren County history or what they're looking for. So, Ann Brown has served the county now very well, and we'd like to recognize her tonight as our archivist and our employee recognition for the month. So, Ann will come forward.
Well, it's interesting, that's for sure, and I'm honored to take Jean's place. For those who don't know, Jean was my cousin, and she spent a lot of years of dedication to the archives, and so I'm just happy to try to follow in her footsteps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
This...if you would bear with us, we wanted to take an opportunity to show our appreciation to all the volunteers. We have many that volunteer at the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center, and we're going to miss somebody, I'm sure, tonight, but Jimmy's got a list of people that have helped us a lot over the last few years, and we wanted to make sure we took a moment to recognize them.
I'm going to do the proclamation first for sexual awareness. So, this is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It says, "Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of Warren County, and whereas rape, sexual assault and sexual harassment impact our community, and is seen by the statistics indicating that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls were experiencing a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence in youth ages 12 through 17 were 2.5 times more likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. Whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. Whereas with leadership, dedication and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in Warren County through increased education, awareness and community involvement. Whereas Warren County strongly supports the efforts of national and state organizations, our community sexual assault program, Families in Crisis and every resident to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It is time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate actions and support one another in order to create a safer environment for all. Now, therefore, a bit resolved that Warren County stands with communities across this country in playing an active role in prevention and advocates for all affected by sexual violence to be recognized. And along with the United States governing Warren County, I do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I think Kristi Stubblefield may still be here and come on, Courtney, y'all can come up. Everybody that needs to come up, as part of Families in Crisis. They do an amazing job, and Kristi may want to say a little something about lately, the number of cases and orders of protection.
We have a couple of members of our SAR team. Our SAR team is the Sexual Assault Response Team for Warren County, and it is made up of Families in Crisis, the Sheriff's Department, people from the Memorial City Police Department, our Commissioners, our DA's office, and we have just a couple of those representatives here tonight. So, we have Jason Walker with us from the Warren County Sheriff's Department, who's been an active member in helping us get this started. Courtney Bree Love, along with him, also was very active in getting our program started. Commissioner David Williams assists on the victims that we see each and every day and is part of the SAR team as well. So, we just want to thank you all for being part of our SAR team and helping victims of sexual assault in our county. Right now, it is very hard for victims of sexual assault to receive services in Warren County. River Park Hospital is having a hard time keeping sane nurses on staff, and so currently, a lot of our victims are having to go out of the county to receive a sexual assault exam, which is very hard once you've been raped, and it's also puts extra strain on our other departments as our investigators and officers also have to go sometimes for hours with them. So, we are currently working on getting a program here where Families in Crisis can offer the rape here in our county. Thank you all.
Kristi and I are also trying to work on some transitional housing as well, so we're trying to look at some opportunities there with Families in Crisis. And so, Chairman Wiltshire reached out about providing some certificates in order to appreciate some of the contributions that have been made at the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center. And over the last couple of years, it's been hard to stabilize the shelter and get it back certified, and with Lisa Morton and Sherri Bradley and others' leadership out there, we've made really miraculous recovery from where it was. So, there's been many volunteers, and these are ones that Chairman Wiltshire wanted to...Chairman Wiltshire, you might want to come down here and read all of these and present them. These were people that you wish to recognize, so...
If you would, when I mention your name, if you would come up here and just gather together, we'll do this all together. And I know some of them are not able to be here. Lucky Paul's Animal Assistant, that's Justin and Daniel Crane. Daniel Crane, they come down here probably monthly, and they transport a lot of our animals up north, and that takes a big burden off of us. So, they're not able to be here, obviously, but we wanted to recognize them. Vendetta Dressel. Vendetta worked with us a few years ago and actually built the Catio, which is serving another purpose now, but put a structure up there. Neil Hilton, State Farm Insurance. Is anybody here from Neil Hilton, State Farm Insurance? They help support us on one of our Adopt One Days. Basically, the entire staff come out and adopt or didn't adopt, but they sponsored animals. Douglas and Lanier Agency, I believe Kevin's here representing them. They did the same thing. They came out one of our Adopt One Days and sponsored each one of their employees sponsored an animal. And this, when they sponsor the animal, it helps the animal get recognition in the public through media, and it helps the animal get adopted. Ginny Owen. Ginny is our photographer for Adopt One. And Ms. Abby also. They're great. They come out every time that we do this and help us with the photography, handling the animals, getting them to be photogenic, which is not always easy. Southern Standard, I'm not sure who's here representing them, but do you want to come up to Bethany and do this? They're constantly doing things for us in the paper, you know, have Pets of the Month or Week. Thomas Vaughn had donated in memory of his son, Tommy Vaughn. We want to appreciate him for that. Come on up, Adam. There was a large donation in memory of Alexander Alex Hill. Is there someone here from his family? That is one that we still are hoping to finish using. That is a very large donation that will help us get some more kennels outside. Sierra North Cut. Nicole McPeak. Nicole was the...well, Dana Dunlap King also might as well come up. They were kind of the people that helped us work through the tethering and sheltering Gary Steele. Gary Steele has supported us numerous times in the past. So, if I would, just get all these people up here together with their certificates, and we'll get a picture. We appreciate everybody, what they do to help us. It's a thankless job, a lot of times, what they do down there, and if you're a Commissioner and you haven't been to our animal shelter, you really ought to go. Chris, come up here. I probably got...I probably saw it and went right over it. Yep, here it is. Come on. With that, I'd like to call a five-minute recess.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We got a motion? We got a second? All in favor? Aye.
Everybody come down here.
All right, let everyone get back to their seats. Here they come. Everybody come on back to your seats. We're fixing to go back to business. All right, we're fixing to go back to order. I'll go ahead and call us back to order. We'll start with the elected official department reports. Executive Haley.
Y'all got a copy of my report? I don't know if you had any questions or not about anything that was on there. I know several of you reached out to me about topics, and I think I answered those.
Motion to accept from Commissioner Bowden, second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next, the Finance Department report. Director Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best answering at this time.
Move to accept.
We have a motion to accept from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Taylor. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center. Ms. Lisa Morton.
Sherri's out of town this week, so I'll take care of you. If you have any questions, the report's there. I will be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Well, a motion to approve from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the Health Department quarterly report. I believe Ms. Rosa Underhill possibly may be here.
My understanding is you guys received a report.
Yes.
If you had any questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Taylor, second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the IDB Financial Quarterly Report. Mr. Don Aglizander.
Good evening, Commissioners. You have a copy of my, sorry. You have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, I have Ms. Dara Seymour, who's just joined our staff, and she'll be glad to answer those for you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Stout, second from Commissioner Lee. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Next is our Planning Commission quarterly report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lee.
The report was in the package. If there's any questions, if I don't have an answer, I can get you one.
Move to accept.
We have a motion to accept from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Taylor. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, our committee reports. First is Budget Finance. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All we have to report tonight is we will start the budget review process Thursday afternoon at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Building and Grounds. Commissioner Hennessy.
Mr. Bowden's not here this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Building and Grounds, the only thing we have reported at this time is, A, we're going to have a meeting scheduled for later on this month. You'll be getting notification of that. And B, as far as the front of the building, the weather's not really worked with us, and we're searching alternative options, either the asphalt or the concrete, to fill in the difference between the sidewalk and the existing parking area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Economic and Agricultural Development. Commissioner Carl D. Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last meeting was this past Thursday, the 14th. We had a very productive meeting with the airport manager and the board chairman. Our committee hopes to have a resolution to present to the full commission next month concerning the airport and the administration of said airport. Our next meeting will be scheduled for May the 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Education Committee. Commissioner Carleen Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last meeting was held on Monday, April the 11th. Lots of items were discussed, and we did review the last ESG savings report, and which was a savings, continues to report a savings. But also, Mr. Swallows made the comment to let us all know that he expects to have the budget before the school board at the end of this month, and then it will become to budget and finance and financial management into the full commission. So that's a real good thing. And the DEP bill that is out there being voted on in Congress to go to the TISA funding program, he also reported that he feel very close to being ready to pass that. So still lots of questions about that every day, and if you're reading the reports also from Mr. Curtis, you can see some of the concerns, but they're narrowing it down, and that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Financial Management. Executive Haley.
Really don't have anything else to report. We'll be scheduling a meeting, I'm sure, in conjunction with some of the other budget requests as we start to clean up the budget and wind down this '21-'22 fiscal year.
Thank you. Next is Health and Welfare, and I will say that in our last meeting, we did pass a budget to go forward to budget finance for review, and that's all I have to report on that at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Hilton.
Yeah, and this may go toward you or Executive Haley one. I was just wanting to update on the Morrison Convenience Center location as far as what we've been talking about, as far as some of the issues we've been having there, and then, well, we'll start with that.
Well, it was in the executive report as well, but I've had multiple discussions with the railroad, and we T-deck, so we're awaiting some letters and an opinion letter from the railroad attorney about the validity of the licenses agreement with the Ruritang Club and about whether T-deck is going to allow us to remain on that site or allow us to move down the railroad. So they're going to be making those letters available soon. As soon as they are, I'll send them out.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Highway and Bridge. Commissioner Prater.
Thank you. The three projects that we have going right now, the bids were let out and awarded, and there were only one company that bid. That's the Bates Hill Road and Mount Zion and Mud Creek Projects.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Legislative Committee. Commissioner Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Legislative has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Next is Policy and Personnel. Commissioner Hilton.
Yes, on item number 17 tonight, we'll be appointing one of our judicial commissioners, Mr. Stephen Martin, and then we still haven't received very many applications on our judicial commissioners, so, but we'll be looking for that on Agenda Number 19, 17.
Thank you. Next is Safety Committee. Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, don't have a whole lot to report, but we will be meeting May the 2nd, first Monday night of the month, and finalize the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our County Corrections Partnership. Commissioner Stotts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Corrections Partnership has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Next, Redistricting Committee. Commissioner England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Redistricting innocent report.
And last but not least, ARP Review Committee. Executive Haley.
We have really nothing to report. We've not met since then, but if other requests come in for the use of that ARP money, we'll be scheduling something as soon as possible.
Thank you. With no old business, we'll go into new business. Item number one, Resolution Number 52022, CDBG Resolution. Executive Haley.
So, Mr. Cotton, you may want to pop in on this, but it's in your packet. So, Mr. Cotton, you want to just give them an overview? It's really just a pass-through of sorts.
Yeah, this is standard operating procedure for applying for a community block grant. The county, the county body has to approve the resolution certifying that we'll be protecting in this project and passing this money along to the end user as identified in the resolution.
It's not in your packet? Is that resolution in the packet? There's, we've got two or three CDBGs. The first one, I think, is for the...
It is. It is number 5-2022.
And the heading on that is what?
A resolution to apply to the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development for community development block grant funds.
Yes, but is it not spelled out in there which one that is? This is for...
Childcare, Community Development.
It's the childcare. This is the childcare one. So ultimately, we had to have a public meeting on that. Anybody that was interested in applying for this CDBG to help either fund a new childcare center for daycare and to provide people to get back to work, and so this is what this one is for. So it's just a pass-through. There's no match on it.
Any other questions? If not...
Motion to accept.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hennessy, second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that? Call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bowden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes. Next item is item number two, Warren County Annual Progress Report, 2022.
Is that the garbage? All right.
Commissioner Lee.
I represent Warren County on the regional, the state regional board with Rutherford, Coffey, and Cannon, and this is just a report that Charlie Johnson compiles of where our garbage, how many tons, how much recycling, and where it goes that we, this year, we're going to, they asked us to approve it through our county court, and I'll be submitting that next Monday night at the 25th. That region board will be meeting here.
I was going to say, will be meeting here.
And so this is just a formality that I appreciate if y'all support.
And it's an open meeting, and so there's a 10-year report and a 5-year report, but we have to do an annual report on any changes in solid waste and recycling, so we have to bring in private business and industry that do recycling, including Bridgestone, but we also have to, the city of McMinnville and any other entities that are involved in recycling. So it's a big progress report that takes quite a bit of time, so.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Lee, a second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next is Amendment GF-FY 2122-24. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is basically the recording equipment that was purchased for the two courtrooms. Ms. Cantrell, there were $25,000 that came out of her reserves, and she asked that she be reimbursed for the 9258, which they are her reserve funds. They passed the respective committees, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bell, a second from Commissioner Taylor. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bowden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Phillip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes. Next item is item number four, Amendment GF-FY 2122-25. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the funding that will pay the wages of the new coach employee at the point that he is hired. This will take care of his pay throughout the rest of this fiscal year. It passed budget finance, financial management unanimously, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Brown. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one, yes.
Motion carries. Next item, item number five, amendment GF-FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash twenty-six. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is pretty self-explanatory. This is the second time this year we've had to do this, but we're having an unusual amount of autopsies performed, and this is something that is our responsibility, and it passed respective committees, and I so move.
A motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? Commissioner Bolden.
It's my understanding that it was stated that a lot of these autopsies are unnecessary. So, we have, we have something a little bit out of control here. Is that correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruble. I'd like Executive Haley to speak to that, if you would. Executive Haley.
I mean, we have no control over who orders autopsies and who does not. Part of these autopsies has been linked to the opioid lawsuit that we have, so everything
Yes.
that could be documented as an overdose or a substance abuse case gives us credibility
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
in the metrics to argue the amount of funds that we may receive as part of this settlement.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is amendment GF-FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash twenty-five.
So, you know, if the district attorney orders them, or that office orders them, there's
Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
not really anything that we can do.
This is basically the recording equipment that was purchased for the two courtrooms.
It's no different from the judge ordering someone to, for a mental health evaluation, you know, in a facility somewhere.
Ms. Cantrell, there were $25,000 that came out of her reserves, and she asked that she
It's just as part of our operations. It's what we've got to do. Some of them, you know, it may be questionable, but it's not left up to me to question them.
be reimbursed for the 9258, which they are her reserve funds.
It's left up to us to pay for whatever is ordered, and once the autopsies are ordered,
They passed the respective committees, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bell, a second from Commissioner Taylor.
we have to, we have to pay for them.
Anyone want to speak to that?
We don't really have an option to do anything otherwise.
If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Michael Bell. Randy England.
Yes.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden. Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Yes.
Carleen Brown. Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Yes.
David Dunlap. Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Yes.
Randy England. Ron Lee.
Yes.
Yes.
Steve Glenn. Gary Martin.
Yes.
Yes.
Stephen Helton. Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy. Casey Owens.
Yes.
Yes.
Ron Lee. Gary Prater.
Yes.
Yes.
Gary Martin. Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Yes.
Daniel Owens. Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Yes.
Casey Owens. Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Yes.
Gary Prater. Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Yes.
Kristy Ross. Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Yes.
Scott Ruble. Philip Stout.
Yes.
Yes.
Tommy Savage. Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman. Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is amendment GF-FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash twenty-seven. I'll speak on this. This is appropriate donations for the following: animal control training for our officers, cement pad of $15,250 for new kennels, $16,521, and relocation of donated sheds, $1,500. This is where we're using some of the money that we re-appropriated last month from the donations. And I would entertain a motion. We have a motion from Commissioner Ross, a second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Savage.
At the, when y'all were having your meeting the other night, the budget and finance were having a meeting at the same time, and Ms. Bradley came in and talked to us and explained what everything was. But we encouraged her to get a local bid on the kennels to try to save some money. I know that this money's been given to them, but in order to make that money go further, do you know if that has been done?
I do not know if she has particularly reached out to local groups or not. I know that she, she looked for several bids. I would assume some of those were local, but, you know, we have a limited amount of time to get this done, and this is something of urgent need. As I said earlier, we are staying at capacity down there, and animals are sharing kennels. So I can't answer that 100% sure no. Commissioner Helton.
Out of the donation money that we have, it looks like we're going to fixing to use a bunch of it. How much is going to be left available after we spend all this money?
I don't have an exact total. It's, it's been in there for years, this money. We mentioned one of the young men, that his estate was donated earlier. We recognized him. This is something that was donated about two years ago or longer. So this money has been sitting there in our budget for years. So they are going to use most, if not all, of it. Yes, Commissioner Bell.
Cement pad. Is this a good quote or outdated? Because I know cement's going crazy, and I bet it will be out.
It, I know it was as recent as a few weeks ago. I don't know how much it's going up at that pace, but I'm sure it's still good. Commissioner Helton.
Well, I know that, that they've been putting some, some companies here, specifically Superior Walls, on allocations, so the cement has, has drastically went up just recently because it's not available, so.
Any other questions? I believe I made a motion for that. If I didn't, I'll do it now. I'll make this, I'll put this in the form of a motion, and, okay. Commissioner Ross made the motion. Commissioner Stotts seconded. Now, anyone else want to discuss it? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is amendment GF-FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is simply to establish a line item for the VOCA Safe Court Grant, and I believe the money is going to be spent to build a room to separate possible witnesses from the courtroom. It's a safety issue, and, and the money is grant money. It passed budget, finance, and financial management unanimously, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Sorry. Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is item number eight, amendment GF-FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash thirty. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a portion of the grant money that we approved in the previous monthly meeting. Brad has decided to redirect this. This $6,000 will be going to sort of an awards program for, for some of the people that are going through the classes, and he had to put that in a different line item, but it is grant money, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes. Next is item number nine, amendment AF-FY twenty-one, twenty-two dash three. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Denny approached health and welfare, or safety, as well as budget and finance, and this is simply a cost increase. I talked to Preston before the meeting, and we're still seeing more increases than we expected this month, but this is just to cover increased costs, and I so move.
Motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner England. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, Commissioner Ruble.
I will add that Preston said that he felt like that they'd be pretty good on this through the fiscal year, these line items, anyway.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Next is item number ten, Amendment Highway FY Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Dash Three. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, this is about the same as the previous. Levy expressed that diesel fuel prices and gasoline had increased, and he's seeing an unusual amount of signs missing, and they're having to replace those, and that is what this $40,000 is for, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Next item is item number eleven, Highway Dash FY Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Dash Four. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for additional appropriations for engineering services. These engineering services are project price-based, and since the prices have increased on the projects, so have the engineering prices. This passed the respective committees unanimously, and I so move.
Motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.[1229.01]